Welcome to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting of July 11, 2017. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all council members are here except Councilmember Agnew who is absent and excused. First item on the agenda is the meeting agenda approval. Is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I'd like to pull AB-108.
Okay. Is there any other changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Review of projected agenda. Is there any changes to the projected agenda? Councilmember Hammer?
We received an email to council about concerns about speeding on 88th Avenue, which is by Bothell High School. And we kind of get, you know, concerns expressed to us about speeding on local streets frequently. We've heard it about 9th Avenue. We've heard it about 190th. And so this person had asked about installing speed limit signs, the kind that flash like what currently exists on 180th. And I said that I would bring that up to council to see if council was interested in pursuing this topic. Speed limit signs have a cost associated with them. Obviously then there's, you know, where do we locate them? Do they actually work to deter speeding? So I said that I would bring that up to council to see if this is a topic that you would like to discuss further sometime in the future when the schedule allows.
Just the speed signs, those ones that are digital?
Yeah.
That's what you want, just in isolation?
Cost, cost of speed limit signs, potential location of those signs, and their effectiveness along with, you know, maybe a discussion from staff about what we're already doing with enforcement, sort of reiterating school zone safety and that sort of thing.
See Mayor?
I just wanted to let the council know that we are working with the individual who wrote the email, so just that you know, we'll look at the situation. Are you asking about citywide speed signs or are you asking about specifically that location around schools?
Well, I know that we have heard complaints citywide about speeding, and we've had requests for those flashing speed limit signs elsewhere in the city at the locations I've mentioned. So it might be a springboard to a broader discussion. I mean, it's nice that we would work with that individual and address the concern in their immediate neighborhood, but it does seem to be a problem citywide.
I heard from her today, she was really pleased with the response from the staff. So like, I don't know if you were on that email back, but she was very happy with the, she heard from both of you, I believe. Thank you. I guess I don't have a problem with that. I would want to expand the conversation a little bit and understand what Safe Streets and Sidewalks is doing with speed traffic calming measures and that type of thing as well. So can we see where that fits into the agendas? We'll come back later. Okay. Any other changes or projected agenda items? Councilmembers Spivey?
Just a heads up, on July 25, I have to be at work, so I will not be at that meeting.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I thought you were done.
So there was an email from a council member to staff about, asking about police volume around one of the methadone clinics up in North Bothell. And then the response back from staff was, doesn't seem like there is an increase in police activity, but the director of that clinic would be happy to come speak to us. And if that is something that, if that's an offer that's still open, I think speaking to the director of that clinic would help us understand more our role in addressing opioid addiction, what we can do as a city, and have that conversation. So staff had made that suggestion that that person could be invited to come, and I was interested in that, following up on that.
Okay. We'll follow up with them, see if they can make it, or when they can make it.
Okay. And then one last thing. We had a speaker talk to us a couple meetings ago about proposed changes on 183rd Street, the removal of left-hand turn lanes, and how that was going to affect what he considered the second Main Street, you know, the north Main Street. And so when, I would imagine we're going to be having maybe some presentation from staff about the final work to be done on the multiway boulevard. Can we have a discussion of those proposed changes on 183rd? And also, you know, what final configuration is going to be on 183rd, 185th? Because he seemed very concerned about the loss of those left-hand changes.
Do you guys understand what she's asking about? Or do you need to get some clarification from Councilmember Hammer?
No, we remember the speaker, yes.
Okay.
There were specific constraints with regards to the multiway, and choices were made on where the left-hand turn lanes could and couldn't fit from a traffic engineering standpoint, but we're happy to bring that back.
And you have a video, so we should probably make that video part of the presentation. It's always fun when you have to watch a video to know how to use a new road. Okay? Oh, you're done? Okay. All right. So upcoming public engagement opportunities? Whoa, we got a bunch. So Music in the Park Concert Series, Fridays, 6:30 PM from July 7 through August 25 at North Creek Sports Field 3. Brian Bogan and his good buddies. And Just Kidding Around, Wednesday, July 19, 11:00 AM, Park at Bothell Landing Amphitheater. Oh, wow. Cool. Main Street Block Party, one year commemoration of the Main Street Fire, Saturday, July 22, 4:00 PM, Downtown Bothell. Shakespeare's Hamlet, Saturday, July 22, 2:00 PM, Park at Bothell Landing Amphitheater. Lynwood Community Band Concert, Saturday, July 29, 7:00, Park at Bothell Landing Amphitheater. That's great, we're using the amphitheater again. Okay. So we're on to special presentations. We have the I-405 Peak Use Shoulder opening, and we have Mr. Henry here from the State Department of Transportation.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having me here tonight to give everybody an update on what's going on here. I am going to talk about a couple other projects, but most of this evening I really want to just focus on the PQ shoulder lane and just let everybody know what our first month's results are really looking like. So I always like to start off and just remind everybody that we do have a master plan here in the corridor, and that is a multimodal, multi-agency set of projects that we've been working on. We adopted that in 2002, and it represents over 150 different projects. We've made a lot of great progress in the last few years working on nickel TPA projects. Now we've got some additional funding coming through Connecting Washington program. We continue to work on it, but we still have a long ways to go to complete this program. We've been tracking the progress that's been happening here in the corridor, and so I don't think this has changed since the last time I was here in council and talked about some of the progress that's been made, but we'll continue to update it as we go. Within the corridor, we have an executive advisory committee, and Deputy Mayor Dewar is on that committee. And the last meeting we had with the committee, we spent a lot of time talking about parking rights within the corridor. That's obviously a very important subject, and we've spent some time thinking about that as well. We don't have any answers yet, but we're continuing to think about it and the conversations that we had about what can we do. And so that is something that we definitely are paying attention to. We're really focused on a couple of different projects right now, and I do want to report out on the PQ shoulder lane. I'll also let you know we are just getting started on a project in North Kirkland at 132nd. It's a half diamond interchange, and I'll just mention that briefly later on. Then a little bit further south from here is the Renton to Bellevue widening project. That's where the state legislature put most of the Connecting Washington funds in the program this time around. And then we also have another project that's currently under construction, but I'll leave that one out tonight here. So the PQ shoulder lane is a project that stretches from Highway 527 in the northbound direction all the way up to I-5. And just as the title suggests, we are using the shoulder as a lane during the evening peak period. And so we're getting an extra lane of capacity out there at the time of day when we really need that extra capacity, when we've got a lot of demand coming onto the freeway. And that was really one of the biggest problems that we had, was we had so much volume coming on in the northbound direction from the Highway 527 on-ramp that that was breaking down all the flow in the rest of the freeway. And so the idea here was that we were going to create a lane where traffic did not have to merge in with all the rest of the traffic, but they could then just continue on with the shoulder and all the way up to the I-5 area. So this is a map that if you've not seen it before, it might be a little bit confusing, but if you've seen it, it really tells a very good story about what's happening out there. And I kind of liken it to Doppler radar. The red is where we have really heavy, heavy traffic, and that's really not good. Green is free-flow conditions, and so that's really what we like to see here in this. And so this strip of map correlates to the corridor, and on, and so you can see there's the map that really stretches from downtown Bellevue all the way up to I-5 on the left-hand side of the screen. And then there's little dash lines that represent different parts along that. And so in downtown Bellevue, the dash line going horizontally all the way across at Northeast 6, that is downtown Bellevue. And then 85th is where we are in the South Kirkland area, then all the way up to Highway 522 and Highway 527, and then I-5 at the top of the map. Down along the bottom is the time during the peak period, and so you can pick out any time, 1700, say it's 5:00, and you can start at the bottom of that map at 1700 and say, see what's actually happening with congestion. And so as you go from the bottom of that congestion contour diagram there to the top, you can see that it starts out in green, so it's flowing pretty well. And then as you hit the South Kirkland area, we turn into the heavy traffic, which is yellow. Then we hit the red traffic, which is really very heavy traffic. We've got a lot of congestion going on there. And then after we get past 85th, a little bit of a break, but it picks up again as we're going through the Totem Lake area, all the way up through Highway 522, and up past Highway 527 where we got all that traffic merging onto Highway 527. So that's what it looked like beforehand. Then in the next contour over on the right-hand side there, that is the after condition. And this is an average of what's going on for the first month after operations. And so we still have congestion down around in the South Kirkland area. This project is too far north to really affect that area. But after you get past 85th, we've really seen a very, very substantial reduction in the amount of congestion that's occurring all the way up through that stretch of roadway, all the way up through Canyon Park and onto I-5. And so we really, really expected to see congestion reduced from 522 up to 527 and onto I-5, but it's actually a little bit surprising how much of an impact it had on the Totem Lake area of Kirkland. We also then, besides just looking at the congestion and where it occurs in the corridor, we also have travel time that we track through the corridor to see how things are different. And when we look at travel time here, we look at it a couple different ways. And on the left-hand side, this is travel time from downtown Bellevue to I-5. And in this particular diagram, we have a shaded area which represents the 5th to 95th percentiles. And so that covers really almost all of the trips that would occur in the corridor when you have, there's still a few trips that are really very, very good and a few that are really, really bad, not captured by this. But you can see it's a very broad band, very broad range of trip links that occur and have been occurring prior to the start of the PQ shoulder lane. The dotted line, black line that goes through the middle of that, that's the average of that 5th to 95th percentile trips. And so you can see what the average looks like. And then the green is now the new average that's occurred in the month after we start operation. And so we've seen a substantial reduction in the travel time through that area from what it was before. During the middle of peak, we still have delays, and as you saw from the previous map, we had delays going through that South Kirkland area. And so that's really impacting the travel time there. But if you go to the next chart there on the right-hand side, you can see what's happening then north of 522. So this is a trip not being affected by that area of congestion we still have in the South Kirkland area, but what's going on as you are going from the Highway 522 all the way up to I-5. And you can see that before the peak hour, that green line is nice and flat. It stays fairly flat all the way through the peak hour. There's a few bumps, a little bit of slowdown here and there, but really nothing very significant. And so that's really improved that travel time through that part of the corridor as well. This just represents how the volume has changed in the corridor. And so we're just looking at the peak hour, and we're looking across all lanes to say, if we had that much of an impact in overall congestion and travel time, how did that change the number of cars that were out there? And what we found is it's really only about 500 more cars in the peak hour, which is less than really kind of expected, but that shows the impact of what happens when the freeway is really operating at capacity, and then you add a bunch of merging traffic into it, it just causes the whole flow to break down. And so we've got more cars out there, but not a lot of cars. We still have room for growth in that area. This is another area that we are taking a look at, is what happens to toll rates with the PQ shoulder lane. We're getting better flows through there, therefore there's less demand for people needing to use or wanting to use the express toll lanes. With less demand, that means the prices can come down. And because it really is a supply and demand based system. And what we've seen beforehand in the high-range tolls, $8 to $10, were 16% of the trips. Now after, with the PQ shoulder lane, that has dropped down to 4% of the toll trips. And then in the $6 to $8 range, it's dropped down from 14 to 8%. If you go down to the other end of the chart, and the $1 to $2 and $2 to $3 range, you see that's where most of those trips have moved to. And so in the middle, not much changed, but it's the high end has really dropped off, and so we're seeing an overall lower toll rate as well. So for the north end, that was really a great project and a great fix for the northbound direction, but then we continue to focus on what it is we need to do in the southbound direction and the way that we are going to be, the only way we can really fix that, we've looked at a lot of different options, is to move forward with some of those master plan projects that add permanent capacity through the 522 interchange. And so we continue to look at the area between 522 and 527 to continue those projects. In the last legislative session, the legislature approved $5 million for us to continue engineering on the north end, to continue our work, and so we'll continue to do that. We've been doing work with city staff, also with transit agencies, and we started with the area in and around Highway 522 and what that interchange would look like. Now we're going to be having a workshop coming up here soon that will also involve your staff once again to look at the Highway 527 area, and what is it that really needs to be done to make that area work and function as well. So shifting to then, some of the other projects are going on in the corridor. I'd mentioned at the beginning that we do have a project at 132nd that was funded by the legislature. This is a half diamond interchange at 132nd. So this provides access to and from the north area there. There's also then, Sound Transit is developing and working jointly with us on park and ride expansion at Kings Gate, and I think this will help that as well as with some of the other activities that are going on in that area, help provide additional access. This is the project that we're spending most of our time and focus on, is adding additional lane between Highway 167 and the Renton area, all the way up to downtown Bellevue. And this will be creating an additional lane that will be coupled with the HOV lane similar to the Bellevue-Lynwood project to create a dual express toll lane system. There are several auxiliary lanes within that project as well to help overall flow of traffic, and that's a fairly large project going to construction in 2019. We will have that project open to traffic in 2024 so that it coincides with Sound Transit's BRT plans here within the corridor. We want to make sure that those facilities are all in place, so that we have BRT functioning and operating essentially between Lynwood at the north end and Burien at the south There's several different elements that we've been working with as well as we've been working on our projects. We've been working very closely with King County on their regional trail on the East Side Rail Corridor. We have committed to having the sections that are within our right-of-way in the Renton to Bellevue area complete by 2020, and so that's an important milestone for us to make sure we have as an early contract requirement. And then we also have, are working closely with Sound Transit to make sure our projects are coordinated, and that is that vertical line between 2024 and 2025. Right at the end of 2024, they plan to have, be bringing the BRT in our online, and we want to make sure our projects are all done, our facilities are in place, so that they have the infrastructure that's needed to operate their BRT on. So we continue to coordinate closely with them. And that's really the end of my presentation. Are there any questions for me?
Of course there are. Deputy Mayor?
I don't really have a question. I guess I spent a lot of time bothering you and explaining to you how difficult it was for Bothell after the tolls went into place. And so I just want to thank you and your staff in WashDOT for a really great effort because I know how hard you worked, and I know that the original schedule was for this peak shoulder lane to open up later. I can't remember, maybe you want to remind us the timeframe?
Yeah, I would be happy to. We really thought that this was going to be opening in about a year from now, but we knew how significant this was, and we worked with the legislature and the governor to advance that. And fortunately, they were very, they recognized the problem and were very supportive of us moving forward. And so we got early funding approval from the legislative leadership prior to the session actually happening, so we were able to get the project out to construction last year. And then we worked really hard with our contractor to get them to advance all the construction. And I think that if you recall, we set a lot of records last year for rainfall. It was a very challenging time for them to be out constructing in that type of weather, but you know, we really pushed hard to make sure we got here. So we came ahead of schedule by an awful lot, and we're just very, very happy to see these results and how it's really making a difference up here.
So I got a little preview, but I did want to tell you I heard gasps up here when we saw the heat map, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Spivey?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. One concern that I kind of have is the reconstructed 160th northbound on-ramp area and the 522 east and westbound off-ramp. There's a significant backup to eastbound 522 that I have seen at times all the way back onto 405. What's the state's plan for fixing that backup? That's, I mean, you got a lot of, I'll call it off-ramp, that is just, it literally backed up to 405 at times, you know, posing a dangerous situation. What's the plan for fixing that?
So we actually have, we're very concerned as well, and we have two plans, and one is more of a short-range plan to address that, and there's a couple different things that we're looking at. And then we have a larger-range plan, long-range. And long-range is really part of that whole section that we're looking at to add capacity all the way up to Highway 527. As part of that, we'll be really permanently addressing that problem with looking at a two-lane ramp, but we're also including additional access points. And so with direct access coming in and out of the express toll lanes, that some traffic will automatically want to use that and go that direction, taking pressure off that ramp. But with the added capacity, then we'll be able to address the problems that are happening with the backup. We still have the same capacities on Highway 522 in the eastbound direction as we get out towards Woodenville, and so there's going to continue to be some challenges. I think demand in this area continues to grow. And I just read a PSRC factoid the other day here, where last year we had 82,000 people move into the area, followed by the year before where it was over 80, and so back-to-back years of over 80,000, and that just continues to put pressure on our facilities. But we are looking at how to use our facilities and get the best out of it, and I think the long-range plan is going to be the key there. In the short term, we think there's a lot of traffic that is choosing to do some cut-through moves at the interchange at 160th, and so there's some considerations that we're going through right now about, do we just prevent traffic from going straight across the ramp and trying to bypass some of that queue by not allowing that movement? Or do we install a ramp meter on there which will discourage people from trying to bypass going through 160th intersection and coming right back on and getting ahead of some of that queue, which will keep then the ramp traffic flowing a little bit smoother and easier? Similar to the same problem we're having up at Highway 527, where if you have a forced merge, it breaks down the flow of traffic. And so we like to spread that merging movements out a little bit and not just have them all happening in a forced manner, one right after another.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hammer?
So speaking of the long-term plan, that was your last slide. It didn't look like the 160th interchange, which Councilmember Spivey alluded to, appears on the long-range plan, and neither does improvements to the 522-405 interchange, which is the bottleneck point, and prevents additional toll lanes being built. So when will those appear on the long-range plan?
So maybe I should go back a couple of, on this map right here, is this one you're referring to?
No, it was your last table, you had the timelines of all the different projects and when things were going to come on.
Yeah. So those projects are not funded yet by the legislature for construction. We are going through discussions internally right now with what are the current toll revenue forecasts, what are the net forecasts? And then we'll be bringing that information back to our executive advisory group in the fall timeframe, and that's where we'll start a conversation about what makes the most sense in terms of moving forward, what's the timing, and what do we want to do in terms of making recommendations back towards the legislature. So we don't have a funded project yet, but we do have it funded to do the engineering work.
So just so I understand, you said that the projects on this long-term delivery schedule are not funded, or they are?
This list here is funded. The work between Highway 522 and Highway 527 is not yet funded for construction.
So here in Bothell, we're looking forward to seeing those projects make it onto a delivery schedule sometime in the future?
Yes, and I think that's where, as we work with our executive committee, we'll develop some strategies on what makes the most sense with the revenue that's available. And then we'll be making, then probably likely, the committee will make a recommendation to the legislature on what makes the most sense.
And then you had the average toll rates. You showed that the toll rates decreased with the addition of the hard shoulder peak lane. Is that toll rate for the entire, is that the average toll rate for the entire length from Bellevue to I-5, or is that some other portion of the toll rate?
Yes, that's the, for the entire length, that's what the average rates are.
Okay. And then do you know how much the 167 to Bellevue widening and express toll lane project costs? cost total? Is that at $1.3 billion?
So the whole program that was funded is 1.3. And that's divided up into three different projects there. So a little bracket on the left-hand side really captures the three different projects. The first one's already under construction. And so then we're now moving into the second one and getting that ready for going out to construction here. And then the third one is further out in time.
And so addition of, say, for example, the 522-405 interchange to a delivery schedule and getting it on a funding list, is that dependent on toll lane revenue? Or will DOT also be looking for other funding sources like they did for the Renton to Bellevue segment?
So until the legislature enacts some kind of new revenue package, it's likely that the legislature is not going to find any new money, any additional money to put into a new project. The last session, the legislature did write a special provision into the budget that said, "Any savings that happens in 405 will stay in 405 to be reinvested back into the corridor." So we did get really exceptional, good bids on the very top project on the list there that helped us take some of that money and invest it into the second project. Now, if we get the same sort of benefits that cascade down, there will be potentially savings to be then maybe combined with toll revenue. So that might be a possible solution then that the legislature would consider. We won't actually know that for a couple of years yet. We're still working on that project. But the legislature is giving us that option as of today, and so that's something we'll be paying close attention to.
Thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I had a question on the $5 million study that's happening in the -- Councilmember Spivey mentioned the cut-through traffic. I witnessed that off of that exit on a daily basis, and it actually is large semis that are doing it, that are actually getting off the off-ramp and then getting right back on so they can do the cut-through. Is part of that $5 million engineering going to look at that, study that as well?
So we've actually -- so already done design work for making those shorter-term, immediate-type corrections. And so we're just now working through prioritizing which ones make the most sense to start right now. And so those will be coming sooner rather than later. The $5 million is really more of the permanent capacity improvements and doing the engineering work associated or needed to answer those questions, help the legislature, and to help everyone else make a good, informed decision. So we've got the other work really already complete or very, very close to complete.
Okay, so the funding would be available to make those improvements?
There -- yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned, you know, I've heard this several times from you guys, but you mentioned bus rapid transit from I-5 Linwood all the way down to Burian, I think is what you mentioned again today. Realistically, what are we as a region looking at for that to actually happen? Timeline?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
In a timeline, realistically, what is our region looking like to have true bus rapid transit from I-5 Linwood all the way down to Burian?
So I think it's 2024 is very, very realistic. I think Sound Transit's here, and they might want to talk about how things are coming together from their end. But as we continue to coordinate, we're feeling confident that we're going to get all the major components in place and make it happen.
Okay, so 2024, we can, as a region, start to expect to see that?
Yes.
So the last thing I'll leave with is, in attending some of the Washdott meetings, and I think those were just advisory meetings, and community members were attending from Woodenville and Bothell, the one thing that I would make sure we are all looking at is the equity in the corridor. Because as we look at this, the pricing structure that we have here, $1.3 billion Renton to Bellevue, then we look at the I-405 to 132nd interchange, $75 million, 520-40, 527-11, and then we go to 520, another $15 million. So if we look at the equity in that corridor, we can kind of see it's primarily south of Kirkland. The funding is going south of Kirkland. And I guess what I would say is, in the next visioning, the next executive advisory groups and all the meetings that you're having, the one thing that I would want to make sure is that we're looking at the corridor as a whole. Because in order to achieve that by 2024, the true bus rapid transit, to me, it seems like we need to have a little bit more spend on the north end to make that really happen. I think you spoke about the projects that you're looking at. And I don't -- we don't see the map here today, but you've presented that map to us before, you know, the projects around 527. Those are very important to the north end, not just to Bothell citizens, but also citizens north of us, which is obviously, you know, is the fastest-growing area in the country right now. So just making sure that we're taking a look at that holistically. I-5 truly all the way down, and mainly the north end, which is actually, based on your map, is the area that's critical right now. But thank you very much for your presentation.
Councilmember Freed?
Mr. Henry, thanks for coming. Nice to see you. You're always good answering all our questions, so I appreciate it. Would you mind going back to Slide 9? That's the one that shows the toll rates. Do you know what total was collected in March as compared to May?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'd be curious if we were able to improve the flow in that area, but that maybe allowed more people to get through the HOV lane, and we actually collected more revenue because it was at a lower rate. That'd be kind of an interesting number to know. So maybe that's something that you could find elsewhere.
We are certainly looking at the difference on a larger scale as we do our traffic and revenue forecasts into the future. We're now accounting for what happens with PQ shoulder lane in place. And then we're also looking at other scenarios. What happens when we get these capacity improvements in place in the north end? How does that change things? What does it affect things? So that is all information that we will be bringing back as we get further into the details and the understanding of just where we are right now with that information.
Great. Well, there are certainly some within our region that are against additional lanes. I am certainly for additional lanes. I mean, when you see the impact of what an additional lane here had between Bothell and Linwood with adding that shoulder, it had a huge impact on congestion relief, and which is a motivation of mine and I'm sure for many people that you hear from. Why not make that lane permanent? Because I've seen before, and I imagine the answer may go toward, we don't have an adequate shoulder, but I've seen that the bridge, the prior bridge of 520, had a notice, we didn't have an adequate shoulder there, and there's a notice, maybe for the next two to three miles, there's not an adequate shoulder, but there's emergency turnouts. Could we have that alternative to make this a permanent lane with limited turnouts?
So as part of our master plan and long-range solutions, we actually do have a permanent lane there. So I think this shoulder will operate in place until the day we can actually create then a shoulder that's in. So we'll get the benefits of it for a number of years here. And I don't ever see that lane going away until we actually build the rest of the permanent features up there.
Is there some RCW that's limiting our ability or design or built standards that limit it right now?
So we try not to do too many facilities without shoulders. And so the other thing that we've been finding is, as we look at the off-peak time periods, we really aren't having that much of a challenge with the capacity. When we first started off, we thought we were going to start the shoulder at 3:00 in the afternoon. And over the course of the year, with all the regional growth we're getting, we saw congestion was building more and more, and we reevaluated and said, "No, it really has to start at 2:00." If we find, six months from now, that 2:00 is really not soon enough and we need to start it earlier, we'll make those adjustments. And we have the flexibility with this system to make those ongoing adjustments as we go. And that's really the good news. We're not locked into a specific time period. So we will want to operate the lane when there is congestion out there. But we're also a little bit nervous about not having or not having a shoulder at all when we have people driving at maybe high speeds late at night. And so we think it just makes more sense to use it when it's needed during the daytime hours.
No, also, when you look at the lanes, there's lines in all the lanes, except for there's not a line on the east side of the shoulder lane. I mean, shoulders don't have lines. But this is kind of a different one. Have you ever considered actually having a line there to show where people should be driving?
And a really good point. And that is something we spend a lot of time talking about. And one of the problems is, if you have a solid line on the right-hand side, that indicates a fog line. And so we don't want anybody to be confused about where the fog line is. If they see two solid lines, and it creates some confusion. So we were a little bit nervous about that and thought that with the overhead indications, that people would eventually figure out that that's the shoulder that they're driving on right now. And it seems to be working fairly well. I mean, people seem to be picking up within the first week how that operates and really haven't had any real issues out there.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your answers, and thanks so much for the information you provided. The only follow-up I'd love to see would be what was the revenue in March 2017 as compared to May 2017?
Sure, sure.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, one more.
Oh, sure.
I just have one quick question. Is there any chance that we're going to have a southbound 405 shoulder lane?
So unfortunately, we cannot come up with a southbound lane that will give us the same benefits as what the northbound lane had. One of the things that really helped us with the northbound and made it work so well was is that we got to I-5, and there's three different destinations. And so there's capacity and places for people to go. As you're going southbound, we don't have that same situation. And so no matter where we end the lane, we're going to have to end it at some point before Highway 522. And when we end it, then it creates a bottleneck, because people have to merge back in as opposed to take a ramp where there's a lot of volume going to a ramp. And so we could not find a solution that really made sense, which is why we then really put our focus on what are the long-term capacity improvements that are needed to get to the benefits, since we can't find that shorter-term project that will work.
And I just wanted to say thank you as well, because the -- for six years, I've looked at those heat maps, and right through Bothell, it's always been red and yellow. And yeah, it's just great to see, at least for northbound 405, that's a huge improvement. So I appreciate it.
Now, we just need to take care of the other direction. That's my goal.
You're going to have all the cities wanting you to do something there to get that kind of adjustment to the congestion, but thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is Sound Transit 3 presentation with Cameron Groll.
Thank you for the opportunity for coming here tonight. We got this invitation last week when we met with Bothell staff and along with other staff along the 522-523 BRT corridor. Bothell was one of the cities that participated with the other group of cities to get that project on the Sound Transit 3 ballot, and successfully so. We've continued to meet with your staff and the staffs of the other cities to get that project going. So I want to first say thanks to the Bothell staff from Jennifer on down. They've been responsive, thoughtful, and very helpful as we've been starting to stand up these projects and get things going. Also want to say thanks to Kim Henry and the Washdott staff, too. It was instructive to listen to their presentation, and Sound Transit appreciates being shown on their timeline. We share some project overlap in terms of the geography of those projects, and our projects are not only interdependent, we're working together as agencies to try to make sure that we deliver well for the constituents that we serve. I've got a few slides I'll go through here tonight. I'm going to tag team with my colleague Paul Cornish, who will also do a few slides here. And then we'll all be available to answer questions. Also, I'll point out, Paul, raise your hand, he'll join me in a minute. And then Kathy Leota is also with Sound Transit on the project team, available for you. So how do I advance this? Keyboard. There we go. So this is a list of the project team, and we'll go through all of this. But we're starting to build capacity at Sound Transit, hiring into new positions and reconfiguring current positions. Your staff has all this information in terms of who to work with on various pieces. And then I'll remind folks that we're talking tonight about both BRT projects. We really have a BRT program, one on I-405 and one on SR 522-523. My goals for this presentation tonight, give you an overview and a bit of a status update on both of those projects, talk about the System Expansion Implementation Plan, which was developed by Sound Transit staff and approved by the board in just this last month or so, do a little bit of a look ahead at next steps, and also describe some keys for success. And I'm going to put this same keys-for-success slide up twice so that it gets drilled into my head, but hopefully also into all of our heads as we look forward to getting these projects delivered. So let me just start with that. Again, the reason I thank the staff here at Bothell and with other cities is that we're dependent on coordination and communication with your city and the other partner cities and the state agencies that we work with to deliver these projects. We hope to enjoy a mutual commitment for sticking to the schedule, as Councilmember McNeil mentioned, getting bus rapid transit on both corridors by 2024. That's the delivery date that we've committed to. There are some local actions that can help us in that process, and I've listed just three categories here. Coordinating with us on outreach to your community, making sure that we are successful in working with, communicating effectively with Bothell residents, businesses, taking actions to review land use and zoning designations, permitting requirements, and having streamlined decision-making, so that as we get to certain milestones and need actions from the cities, those actions can be done efficiently. That doesn't mean you necessarily have to sacrifice what you're looking for, but we do need to have timely decision-making and not get diverted off into long-winded discussions where our timeline is then put at risk. And then something that's important in this day and age especially is helping to manage costs. I think we all have that duty as public officials, using taxpayer and ratepayer dollars wisely. But I'll tell you, one of the challenges that we have here in this region, and I just took an airplane flight back into Seattle Tacoma International Airport yesterday morning and had a chance to kind of look down at our region. In fact, I traveled right over Bothell in the 522 corridor and then turned south to go over downtown Seattle. I sort of lost count of all the cranes that I counted along that trip. Our region is doing fairly well economically, but that also means that housing costs and construction costs are rising. So even if we do a good job of estimating those costs and build in float factors and build in contingencies, we're racing against a really tough thing. And we're finding already some assumptions made not too long ago for ST2 projects are now falling a little short of what the actual projects cost in an ST3 world. So you can help us, and we'll help you manage those costs so that we can actually get the project done. I'm going to go quickly through these slides, because I think it's important that we all keep in mind exactly what's on the region's plate. Sound Transit is a regional agency, as you know, three counties, 51 cities that we serve. So I'll very quickly go through all of this. Last year, we managed to reach these milestones. Looking ahead, in the next few years, you can see, as I just paged through these, the systems start to expand, and it's going to grow in a variety of different places. 2023 is a very big year, because light rail to the north and to the east reach milestones then. We're making improvements to sounder commuter rail, not directly affecting Bothell, but it's important regional amenity. 2024, another big year, we've talked about that. That's directly related to the BRT projects here, along with other sounder and light rail improvements. 2030, a big year, you can see for improvements in Seattle. Infill stations coming onboard as well in '31. A downtown, new downtown transit tunnel. By my count, that's, I think, the fourth major transportation tunnel through downtown Seattle, so it's a big deal to design and execute that. That'll make sure that the system that we're building actually can operate with cross-traffic coming through downtown. actually can operate with cross-traffic coming through downtown. 2036, lines, our light rail lines are intended to get all the way up to Everett. And of course, we're working on getting to Linwood right now. And again, other sounder improvements, additional light rail. And then finally, this plan, which goes out a full 25 years, delivers light rail between Kirkland and Issaquah. So it's a lot of things going on in a lot of different places. We're trying to pay good attention to all of the communities that we serve, but you can see by this map, you start to add up to three counties and 51 cities. By the time this plan is done, 16 of those 51 cities will be served by light rail. So you can see there's, there's a lot going on. And I think somewhere around a dozen cities will be served by Bus Rapid Transit. So important to work together well to deliver all these projects on the timelines that have been identified. I'm going to turn it over to Paul. He's going to walk you through the two BRT projects and the maintenance and operations facility, and then I'll come back on to talk about our implementation plan.
Awesome. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Paul Cornish. I'm the BRT Project Director. First, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, BRT. BRT is a new line of business for Sound Transit. We've been running light rail, heavy rail, and regional express buses for quite a while, but with the passage of ST3 last fall, we got in this new business, which is Bus Rapid Transit. It's a bus service. It's fast. It's frequent. It's reliable. We have a lot fewer stops than like a regional, like a local bus might have. There's a couple of examples of BRT in the region. One is King County's Rapid Ride, and the other is Community Transit Swift. And between the two, I think, we'll be much closer to this, to the Swift program than the Rapid Ride. The Swift program actually has their own stops. It's based on a lot more. And they've, all the Swift stops are very, they only serve by Swift. They're very distinct. They have the big columns to them. They're very clear that's what they are. And so that's kind of what we're looking for. It's a nice definition of, you know, this is Sound Transit BRT program. You know when it's coming. You know where it's going. It's going to be very distinct. So the first, the first piece is actually the 522, which on this map that I have up here, starting from left to right, tie in to the five, the city shoreline at the new light rail station that will be built as part of that extension. It'll go down northeast 145th between shoreline and the city of Seattle. It'll be adding some, some Q jumps there at some of the intersections to allow the, the buses to get, to get through those. Things are a little tight up there, a little constrained. So adding some, some Q jumps, we have some. And all these little circles here, these are actually stations. What we call a station, and they're in pairs, is a bus stop or a station going each way, eastbound, westbound. So that's what those are. And then we get down to 522. It heads up left, out to Lake Forest Park. Again, this is where we start to get into the business and transit lanes. This is where they start, which is the, not totally exclusive bus lane for the buses, but, but it is in the diamond lane, which is simply the buses and, and right turns. And then we go through Kenmore. A lot of those lanes have been built. I think almost all of those lanes exist. There'll be some more stations there. Then we get to Bothell, where there are some gaps in the, in the bat lanes, and we're working with the city on that to close those gaps, which I'm very excited about because I used to, I started on the bus side at Sound Transit 15 years ago. And back in regional express, we actually worked with the city of Bothell to build the Wayne Curve bat lanes. And so that, which was, we just thought was a great success. So we look forward to working with Bothell again as we move forward to fill in those gaps. And then we head out to UW-Bothell, Cascadia College campus, where it's all going to come together, our system, metro system, WashDOT's 405 program, ultimately Community Transit, and there'll be a big transit, transportation hub there. And then we head out to Woodinville, out 522, getting off 195th. We don't have any capital improvements out there, but we'll have some, some stops. And so we're trying to figure out kind of what those stops would look like because they'll be a little different, or at least to some, to get a little smaller than we have at the rest of the system because we're not putting a lot of capital money out on that side, even though we'll be running the buses. So along with all this, we're going to build the bus operations and maintenance facility, which I'll talk about at the end of my presentation. And we're going to build three parking garages. These are three, 300-stall parking garages. There'll be one on Lake Forest Park, one in Kenmore, and one in Bothell. And we have a few sites, sites we've been looking at. We've been talking to Bothell staff about a couple. They, they gave us a nice suggestion not too long ago. And when we go through the environmental documentation process, we'll actually analyze those and screen those and figure out what makes the both most sense. And then that service is planned in 2024, which, which is the theme that we all have, have going here tonight on delivery of service. So then I'm going to hop over real quick to the 405 BRT. And Kim and I could probably give each other's presentations because the 405 BRT and his, his I-405 express lanes are so intimately tied together. Again, we're going to have 10-minute frequencies in the peak hour, 15-minute off-peak. We have several existing stations on the 405, or at least we're going to have like, we got Totem Lake, Brickyard, Canyon Park Freeway Station, Bellevue Transit Center exists. There are some things that need to be built, specifically at northeast 85th and Kirkland. We need to build an inline flyer stop there, northeast 44th Street in Renton, and Kim, Kim touched on that a little bit. And then in our Greedy, Rainier, Rainier in South Renton, we're going to build a transit center and a parking garage at the same site. It's going to be somewhere in, in South, South Renton around Greedy and Rainier Avenue. So some big keys to this, we're going to connect to the 522 BRT system. Not exactly sure where. This is really getting to the 405 BRT, the 522 BRT. They all kind of meet right here in Bothell. And so Bothell can probably give Fremont a run for the center of the universe because this is definitely going to be the center of this BRT system up here at the campus. And so that's a real big deal. But again, the real big deal, another big deal is Kim's, Kim's delivering the express toll lanes on I-405. And, and if Councilmember McNeil's not hounding Kim about where he's doing on that, on his schedule, I'll be the one hounding him and, and seeing how he's doing on his schedule because again, these are intimately tied together, these two projects. So quickly, I'll just go through the north 405. At the top, where the five meets 405, we'll be running in general purpose lanes up there. As we come south, we'll get into the, the express toll lanes. We'll stay in those toll lanes. There'll be some sort of a connection at 195th UW-Bothell or State Route 522. That's, and that's another thing that Councilmember brought up. How's all that going to work together? That's on our work plan as to how to make the WashDOT improvements and the transit improvements work together. And we'll serve Totem Lake, Central Kirkland, and we'll also serve Bellevue. And at that point, the buses go back up north, so they just work the north half of 405. But then we have the buses working the south half of 405. Again, we'll be in the express toll lanes till we get down about towards 518. At that point, we're going to be in H and V lanes. Then we'll get down to general purpose lanes in Tuckwell. And general purpose lanes are just your basic lane that anybody, anybody can drive in. And finally, we'll be in lane, in bus only lanes from Tuckwell International Boulevard, which is the light rail station, the Bearden Transit Center. So you can see we're sort of piecing all this together, transit centers, light rail stations, existing facilities, the Bellevue Transit Center, to bring all that together. So we have some, some issues as we move forward with this. Again, where are we going to locate these parking garages, working with the feasibilities, working with the staff, working with the councils in the various cities, what makes the most sense for the project? Again, the UW-Bothell, Cascadia College, how is all that going to come together? That's where all the transit's going to meet. What, what makes the most sense for there? And what we like to do with all these transit services, we don't want to compete with each other. We want to complement each other. And so how do we do that? That's on us to work together and figure out what's the best way to maximize the use of those funds. We've identified kind of initially where we think the BRT station should be as we go through 522, but maybe those need to be modified a bit. Maybe they need to be tweaked a bit as we get a little closer into the details. So that's something to look at. We need to finish the design of the missing or the gaps in the bat lanes on 522 and 523, and the Q jumps on 523. So there's some design and preliminary that needs to be figured out. And how do we make this happen? What's the most efficient way? What makes the most sense? Design for I-405 interchange improvements. We're talking about 522. We've talked about how we're going to make the inline stop at northeast 85th and Kirkland. That's going to be a bit of a challenge. So continued design work between our team and certainly the WashDOT team and how we're going to bring this off. Like I said, one thing about BRT, it's going to be branded as its own system. We're going to have our own buses, our own stations, our own maintenance facilities. It'll be its own thing. You'll know, you'll know what it is. Now, what it's going to look like, not quite sure yet. You know, blue, purple, green, I don't know what we're going to call it. We do have a working name in house. But there's a whole, how's that come together? And working with the, our marketing folks and all the jurisdictions of which we go through, a whole bunch on 405 and 522, how do we do that to make that a distinct program? And how do people know that this is the, this is Sound Transit BRT program? Again, transit integration, we got so many agencies that we work with, let's get the best bang for the buck and make complimentary service. Agency leads for found design. This is what I was talking about with Bothell. There's some things Bothell might want to take the lead on, on designing and constructing because it makes more sense. Have you guys do it? You know the area. You know the, you know the neighbors. You know what's going on. And then other places, it might make sense for WashDOT to build it because WashDOT, well, have the 405, but they also have 522 and 523. So we got to figure out what's, this is what Cameron said, what's the best way with all these people who try to accomplish the same goal? How do we get them the best way that we can? And then the service from UW-Bothell out to Woodinville, we won't have the capital improvements, but how do we get that program out there as well? Folks know this, the BRT program. Folks know how they can ride it and how it's going to work. So we have some challenges, but we're off, but we're off to a good start. And then finally, the operations and maintenance facility. This would be a facility that would support the BRT program, which is both the 405 and the 522 BRT. It accommodates 60 buses, possibly expanding to 80 buses in the future. And the functions and amenities, we show on the right, on the repair shop, office support areas, bus parking, employee parking. It would have the 1% for art that would come with our projects, landscaping, a lot of those amenities. We have a site that was kind of early identified in the planning part as the representative alignment, representative site. And that site is actually for sale and being marketed right now. So we have a process, what we call a protective acquisition. We will sometimes purchase property if it looks like it's going to be bought and it's something we might need. So actually, this coming Thursday, two days from now, our real estate group are taking a proposal for our capital committee to consider to start pursuing this property up in the Canyon Park area as a protective acquisition. That doesn't mean that we don't look at other sites to make sure we, we pick the best site, but this is the representative site, probably in the running for one of the better sites. So we want to try to purchase that now, particularly with, you know, the market the way it is. It's like, if it's for sale, let's see if we can buy that now. So that's, that's something that's going to be considered on Thursday. And then if the capital committee approves it, they will actually recommend it to the Sound Transit Board, which will meet two, two weeks later, and actually take, take action on that. So that's basically what I had. We have this new program at Sound Transit, the Bus Rapid Transit. It'll be distinct, unique, easily identified, shorter headways, more frequent service, but there's a lot to do. And it's going to be coming along 522, 523, working with all the cities along those corridors. What's the best way to make it happen? What should Sound Transit build? What might the cities build? Where should these parking garages be? How can these parking garages complement transit as well as complement other goals that the cities might have? So we got a lot of challenges ahead of us, but at the same time, Cameron threw, threw up that list of folks working on it, and that's just the internal, the core team at Sound Transit. We have our operations folks and everybody working on this, as well as a big inter-agency group from all the cities along the alignment here working for us. What's the best thing to make this happen? So we're excited. Our consultant procurement to hire consultant to start this work for the first one, for the 405, is going to be, hopefully, if they send a schedule out on the street, August 8th. So, you know, consultants have been very interested. They've been asking us about it. How's this, you know, what are you looking for? So we're very curious to see who submits for that. We expect it to be a very active procurement. And then sometime after that, we'll put out the procurement for the 522. These two projects, they'll be advertised in separate contracts, but one requirement from both consultants is working with each other. We've built that into the RFQ, and that'll be in the scope to make sure that we don't lose any gaps or seams with that. So that's what we're doing. And I think Cameron, I'll talk a little bit about the full system.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul. So how do we deliver this? Given all that's going on, I mentioned that the Sound Transit Board approved a system expansion implementation plan. You, I think, got a little folio handed out to you. It's a short version of that plan. It has this cover on it. The full plan is available on the, the Sound Transit website. What that plan calls for is these three points kind of are underscored in that plan. One, we need partnerships to deliver these projects, and we've identified some mechanisms to try to build those partnerships and have them be effective, as effective as we can. One, key one is the elected officials group, elected official leadership group. Our working plan is to have that group start meeting early in 2018, so not too far from now. We would be inviting probably through the mayor here, Bothell, to participate in that, in that group. There will also be stakeholder groups. We'll ask for your help to find the right stakeholders to participate in that. We'll need to find stakeholders along a corridor so it won't be just all Bothell residents. It will be residents from Kenmore, residents from shoreline and other places for that project. And then 405 will also have a group. And then we're already working at an interagency level. I mentioned the meeting that we had just last week. We'll continue on with those meetings, working with the city manager, with her staff, and then informally at a staff-to-staff level to start getting down into the weeds where we need to. So all of that is getting going right now, so we'll be working on those three fronts. What I mentioned to the cities last week at that meeting was the idea of a concurrence document. It's a way of kind of putting to paper the rules of the road for how we're going to work together. It's a very positive and, and forward-looking document. Sound Transit has used a variety of different partnering types of agreements with different names in the past. And so the expansion plan asks us to develop these documents now and use them as effectively as possible to help organize ourselves, make commitments to you as partners, have you make commitments to Sound Transit for working together. And so we hope to execute those partner, concurrence and partnering documents in the next several months as well. And then key to the environmental review is trying to get to a preferred alternative. In other words, identifying exactly where is the garage going, exactly where are the stations? If there are choices in the routing, how can we narrow those choices down as, as clearly as, as possible? So getting to that preferred alternative as early as possible so that the review process, the environmental documentation that's necessary can be done efficiently, that we don't, in a sense, keep looking at alternatives for extended periods of time. Time is unfortunately, like often in these projects, it's, it's not our friend here. Time, adding more time will really put at risk delivering on time. And of course, as time goes on, costs rise. So we all have, I think, an, a, an incentive to work early and often and cooperatively to try to deliver these projects, and including trying to make sure that the environmental review process goes as efficiently as we can. Again, we don't want to sacrifice quality. We just want to make sure that we go as effectively and efficiently as we can. This is kind of a generic timeline that shows how projects proceed. I will not test you on this later. I'm still putting all of this stuff in my head because it's a fairly complex diagram, but we're really at the left-hand side of this. The, if you look at the, the top line there, the planning and environmental review, final design and construction, and then start of service with that circle image, we're starting the planning and environmental review, the project development phase for these projects right now. So that's things like scoping and identifying alternatives, doing conceptual engineering. It completes with the Sound Transit Board formally selecting a project to be built. That is a key milestone that would happen at the end of that planning and environmental review phase. And what that does is kicks us into final design, where we go from 30% design all the way to 100%. And then that in turn kicks us into the construction process. We have to start service by 2024. So we're working at the early portion of that timeline, but we've got our eye on the end of it and starting to work backwards. So to get out there with buses where somebody can get on and take a ride from here down into shoreline and get on that light rail, backing up from that 2024 day, what are all the things that need to happen? This gives you a sense of, of what goes into that process. So here's kind of a, an accelerated schedule for the next 18 months. This is actually trying to beat what we've officially published This is actually trying to beat what we've officially published in terms of the overall project timeline. We're trying to get going as fast as we can. So I mentioned, looking right now, quarter three, 2017, quarter three, quarter four, the concurrence document, partnering agreements, selecting the consultant. As Paul mentioned, we're going out to publish RFQs to get those consultants to respond. And then identifying the key issues. You saw a slide where we identified about 10 of those, where we're working ourselves and working with your staff to make sure we've got those all identified. And then moving into 2018, where we'll be actually locating where the three parking garages are going to go, completing the environmental review process, getting into the last quarter and the first quarter or two of 2019, completing the conceptual engineering. And then we hope by quarter two, 2019, and that is a very aggressive timeline, that we get to actually that project to be built milestone, which allows us to then going into final design. So this is accelerated. I hope to keep to this schedule. We're going to do everything we can to keep to this schedule, but it will depend again on those keys to success. Coordination and communication, so far, that's working really well. Again, your staff have been responsive and thoughtful, and they want to see this project work well. A commitment, and that's what we're hoping for through the concurrence document and the partnering agreements, is your city's commitment, other cities' commitments to those timelines. If we can all commit to those timelines, then I think we stand a chance of actually getting to them and meeting them. And then taking local actions here in the community. You have a rich tradition of reaching out effectively to your local community. Help us work with you and your staff to talk to the right people here and engage with them so that they're aware of and can engage with this process and give us their feedback as we design this project, both of these projects. Taking local actions if there are any necessary for identifying land use changes, permitting changes that you can undertake to help streamline those processes locally. And again, helping us manage costs as we go through the process. The good news is that Sound Transit three budgets do have dollars for things like station access, and they have dollars for our review of transit-oriented development and things that weren't included in earlier Sound Transit two or Sound Move projects. So we've got some dollars dedicated to looking at a wider array of topics. They're not unlimited, and they have to often be shared across corridors and across different jurisdictions. But it does allow us to take a more holistic look, and we hope to do that in concert with you. So again, that completes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions or take your comments. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I wondered if you could go back to the slide that shows the north end of the corridor in relation to the BRT?
This one here?
Yeah. So I wanted to point out, because I think it was a little confusing when Councilmember McNeil asked about when we'd have true BRT. I think he was meaning lanes and access that wasn't meander, where the bus wasn't meandering through general purpose lanes. And so really, what we'll be getting is bus frequent transit, not bus rapid transit. And I just wanted to clarify because there's obviously without even a budget yet for those lanes and some of those off ramps, direct office, direct access lane ramps, it won't be rapid.
It's a good point, and it's a fair point. Our project does not include dollars to create additional lanes for that kind of purpose there. So those aren't in our budget. If I had a wand, I would absolutely get more of a green line to extend all the way up through this quarter as opposed to having the yellow highlight there for the general purpose lane. I'll mention something that I think may make a difference. It doesn't change the facts on the ground, but the federal definition for bus rapid transit requires, I think it's a majority of the lanes be in a dedicated or managed lane such that you can get that reliable service. This project will meet the federal definition. We're going to do everything we can to maximize the number of lanes, the length of lanes, so that it's as reliable as we possibly can deliver. And, you know, the lane is a big part of it. I think there are other things that are going to help us in that as well. The station design will help us. Even the vehicle design will help us improve reliability and have it be successful for as much of the total project as possible. You could make the same kind of argument along 522 in that there may be some places, for example, on, actually, 523, 145th Street, we've got what are called Q jumps, which are sort of like mini bat lanes for portions of the project, but we don't have full bat lanes for the entire length. Putting in, it was considered, but cost prohibitive, and a lot of local land uses would be displaced by creating those additional bat lanes. So it's a judgment call, was made as a part of the ST3 development project. And we're going to do the best we can. But you're right to call it what it is. It is the best we can do in certain areas, but we will take a systems-wide look and we'll try to make sure that as we develop this, we'll use every technique we can to get as close to true BRT as we can on every mile.
Thanks, that would be helpful. I just, I wanted the audience to understand the difference. The other question I had was in regards to page 24.
Slide 24?
Yeah, slide, I don't know if it's slide 24. Yeah, down in the right-hand corner.
This one?
So the ST Board selects project to be built. What does that mean?
Means that the Sound Transit Board has the authority to actually make the determination as to exactly what project will get built with the construction phase of our, of our program. So as we go through looking at the different alternatives and options, for example, where does the garage get sighted? Is there a station on, you know, at this corner or that corner? That's something that we go through working with you to make the best determination possible. Our goal as staff is to have anybody from Bothell who we're working with be able to come to the Sound Transit Board and say, project that you've just heard from, from Sound Transit staff is what we want to see. Please approve this. And then that makes it easy for the ST Board because they then can approve that project to be built. Into that decision goes all of the environmental review, the cost analysis as well, so it's got to meet the budget. It's got to be approvable by federal agencies. It has to be workable from our state partners' perspective, and it's got to make, meet your needs as well. So it's a big balancing act. There is going to be some compromise probably along the way. I will not guarantee that everybody will get every bell and whistle they want on this project, but that decision does rest officially with the Sound Transit Board. And you have a strong oar in the water to help influence that.
And then one last question, in regards to signing the maintenance and operations building. Is there money in your budget? I would assume that it would be in your best interest to have easy access from your maintenance and operation to 405. And so depending on where you cite it, there are obviously different issues to consider, but is there money in your budget for, I guess, access to and from that, that maintenance and operation building that would ease congestion and the implications on local traffic?
Yeah, I'm not aware of a dedicated line for that kind of funding in the budget, but we'll take a closer look. A lot of the ST3 package, as it was assembled together, ended up combining certain elements of the project. So we'll probably have to unpack it a little bit to see if there is something that was actually anticipated there. The representative site certainly was known in terms of its location and the distance it would, you know, what are the, what are the things in between where that site is and getting to actually I-405? So we'll take a close look at that. Your staff has already highlighted some of those challenges for us, so it's-
It's just a little congested up there.
Right in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
So I'm looking at the map that you gave us.
Yes.
And I'm looking at the 405B quick transit or more frequent transit lanes, not BRT. And I'm going to reiterate Councilwoman McNeil's point about equity and the lack of. And I'm not even going to talk about the lack of equity between light rail and bus rapid transit. When I look on this, when I look on the segment, the orange segment on this map, if you start at Linwood, we have in the plan additional parking, added parking at the Linwood parking ride. Next stop down, Canyon Park. No additional parking at that park and ride. Next stop down, Brickyard Road. No additional parking. Limited improvements at Canyon Park or Brickyard Park and Ride. Kingsgate Totem Lake, lots of improvements there, direct access lanes, lots of investment from both Sound Transit and Department of Transportation. So that's the Totem Lake interchange. Northeast 85th, we see on DOT's long-range plan that that's slated for major interchange improvements. South Kirkland Park and Ride also already has received major improvements and increased park and ride capacity. Northeast 44th, ink added parking. South Renton, added parking. Everywhere along the 405 corridor, there are improvements going on, but not in Bothell, not at Canyon Park, and not at Brickyard. And now, for the first time, I'm hearing that what we are getting is a maintenance and operation facility at an interchange, 527, that has no dedicated funding anytime in the near term from DOT, no dedicated funding from Sound Transit. We get all the impacts of bus travel to this maintenance operation facility. We don't get any benefits. We are trying to plan for that area, that, at our Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. And one of the problems it's facing is it doesn't meet activity units, which is housing. It has a deficit of housing there. And what we're proposing, or you're proposing with putting a maintenance and operation facility there is basically taking land offline that detracts from our ability to meet the requirements of the PSRC to maintain its regional growth center status. So I would hope that the council would oppose putting a maintenance and operation facility, a Sound Transit maintenance and operation facility, anywhere in Bothell, especially not at that Canyon Park Regional Growth Center area, that we are desperately hanging on to its designation so that we can somehow hope in the future to get funding. And we're not on anybody's list. I find it, I find it ironic that you would tell us that we, we compete with Fremont for being the center of the universe in terms of where, how transit intersects on 405 and 522. We know that because we live the lack of infrastructure, and yet there's no plans to improve it. So I hope council will, will have this discussion, and I don't think that we should be accepting an operation center until, or unless we get significant improvements in bus rapid transit in the form of direct access lanes and added parking at our park and rides on the 405 corridor, when every other station on the 405 corridor is getting some kind of significant improvement. And we, we asked for this during the Sound Transit three, you know, campaign and that process. We asked for that, and we didn't receive it. And I'm really disappointed to hear that now Sound Transit, Sound Transit is looking at us for a maintenance and ops facility. We know, we've lived with the bus barn. We're trying to clean up a bus barn site right now. I don't want another bus barn. Certainly not all impacts and no benefits. And so I'm hoping that with or without a bus barn, you will be looking at project savings like DOT is to bring improvements to Bothell because we were left. We were left out in the Sound Transit three package. Bus operations don't activate an area, and that's what we want to see for the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. We want to see an activated area, just like our downtown area, and a bus barn isn't going to bring that. And then I also note that you mentioned that the college campus is going to be the site of a expanded transit center. It's going to be a significant part of your operations. I would encourage you that every discussion going forward with transit agencies in the city, every single one of those discussions involves the UW Bothell and Cascadia. Not select ones, but everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Spivey?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your presentation. I will echo everything that Councilmember Sandberg had to say. Bothell is getting nothing out of this, but we're expected to, if you go to your last slide about your, your keys to success. Coordination, communication, you failed on that for, because this is the first time we're hearing about the bus barn, you know, the maintenance facility. Community outreach, you're doing a little bit of that right now, but you're not, I don't feel like Sound Transit is being a good partner. And if you want to support, you've got to be a good partner. One of my concerns is with all this traffic that we're trying to mitigate on the 405 and I-5 corridor, it's like trying to stop the flooding in the mainstream of the river. We, you mentioned all the crane, tower cranes that you quit counting on your flight in. Well, that's only part of the growth. There's so much growth going on outside of that corridor, and that's, and all this traffic is coming in, coming in because they have nothing, and then it's backing up. If you look at I-5 north of Everett, Highway nine, Highway two, Highway 522, 167, 169, 18, 90 east of East Gate, 202, 203, all heavy traffic areas that they're coming into this air, into this 405 and I-5 corridor. What are you doing to lessen the traffic out there so we don't have to do so much here? Where it's more expensive to do it? If, all these communities, there's incredible growth out there, but we're not doing anything about light rail out there on some of the existing rail lines that aren't basically being used to move people from out there into the economic corridors. They're having to drive into the economic corridor to get on, to get to a park and ride to take a bus in. What are we doing to lessen the traffic before it gets here? You know, that's a concern of mine. Again, it's like trying to stop the flooding when you're downstream in the mainstream, main stem of the river. I don't know, I just, I just don't see positives outside of what downtown Seattle and those areas are getting out of Sound Transit. This three counties government entity is not helping the exterior of the counties at all. And here we are, part of that, that corridor, and we're, we're getting nothing. So it, man, you got to do something to get some support, I think, from this council. So I have concerns about this plan.
Councilmember Freed?
I guess I'll ask the mayor whether we should just take these as comments or whether you want any staff response for any of these.
Sure, if you have a response, that'd be great.
I don't think I have a great response to either Councilmember Sandberg or Councilmember Spivey's comments if there's a significant dissatisfaction. And I apologize if this is, some of this news is coming for the first time. What I can tell you is that, you know, Sound Transit did what we could during the ST3 development process to work with City of Bothell and the other cities to incorporate those cities' desires into the ST3 plan. I don't think any city got exactly what they wanted entirely. But one thing I guess I would say is that while Bothell has some very unique and profound challenges, there are two bus rapid transit lines that cross here in the City of Bothell. No other city enjoys that or will enjoy that service. You will have choices going essentially four different directions, and no other city has that, that choice. To deliver that requires some actions by Bothell and some actions by other cities. A maintenance facility will have to go someplace. The decision has not been made to actually locate it at the representative site. We're simply trying to be prudent and keeping an option available. Whether it goes there or not is still a decision to be made, and I would encourage Bothell to weigh in as you choose on that decision, since at least one of those sites that will be analyzed would be a site that's, that's here. But other sites can be brought to our attention. But other sites can be brought to our attention, and if there are other alternatives, I think we could, we'd be willing to look at those alternatives. We cannot run a bus rapid transit, or a bus reliable transit, or a bus, whatever we want to call it, with, can't run a system or a service without having a maintenance and operations facility. It won't run, it won't start in 2024, it won't start. So we'll have to find a place to locate it somewhere in order to provide service to Bothell and to the other 10 or 11 cities that would be served by that service. As a recovering planner, I know your comment about the growth out in kind of extra urban areas is a real challenge, and I think it gets expressed here in Bothell. So I think you've got a very fair and serious point on that. I think working with the state, we're trying to find solutions to the existing infrastructure that's here today and try to use it as best as possible. We had a presentation on that earlier tonight. And then we appreciate the opportunity to work with you and with WashDOT to try to find a way for BRT to use that same infrastructure effectively. The more buses we can get to run on those lanes, the more options people have so that they don't all have to drive through Bothell to get to where they need to go. So I hope our facilities will at least put a dent in the problem. I don't for a minute say that they're going to solve the problem, but they are part of an overall solution. We hope to work with you as cooperatively as possible to get this project done. And I just would end by saying, I think the fate of this project is dependent in pretty large part about how we can work with Bothell. So I'll take the information and the concerns that we have heard here tonight to heart and talk further with your staff about how we can make improvements where we can. So take what you've said seriously, and we'll continue to try to work together.
City Manager, did you want to add to that?
I just wanted to, I understand council's frustration, but I wanted to acknowledge that Sound Transit, and Cameron in particular, has been very communicative at a staff level, and the conversations have to start at a staff level. And so we've been talking about the implementation of ST III and the potential that they're interested in that parcel. And really, Cameron's here at the earliest possible moment. First, they have to do exploratory, and they have to look at these parcels, and so it was his initiative to come tonight. This information is now, you know, at the point where it can be publicly discussed. And so I appreciate the frustration that you haven't heard it before, but there's still, Sound Transit was just passed in November, and the project managers have just been hired, and work is just starting. And so rather than, I think, be frustrated that you're just hearing about it, I really encourage you to see that they're here now, very, very early in the process, sharing this with you and letting you know the thoughts about how to implement this project. And at a staff level, we've been saying, you know, we always want to look at things regionally. It is very difficult to cite a maintenance facility. And so as part of mass transit, you have to look at options. And so our discussions have been, what can Bothell get out of having a facility like that? We need to get federal money to make improvements, substantial improvements to the intersection around Canyon Park. And so is there an opportunity in a partnership, if a facility like that was cited in Bothell, to then go after those federal monies and be able to get those monies to be able to make significant enhancements to that area? Those are the kinds of partnerships and opportunities we've been talking about. So I just, I just wanted you to know that it's hard. You can't just bring ideas before a council before there's been any discussion at a staff level. So I just really, that was important to me, that you knew that.
Thank you. Councilmember Freed.
Great, thanks. Welcome to Bothell. Good to see you again. Over the last 12 years, we've actually seen significant investments in Bothell. We've seen the south access to the University of Washington-Bothell. We've seen all the way from Canyon Park to downtown Bothell with the widening of the boulevard and bike lanes and car lanes, and then all the way through Wayne Curve through downtown, the rerouting of 522, over $150 million of investments in congestion relief, access lanes, and otherwise. So we've seen a lot of investment. I think over the last year and a half, we've been in really a transition mode with certainly our council, with leadership of the City of Bothell, and a lot of that's just still, you know, playing out. So I don't know if the last year and a half, just us finding our appropriate roles, we missed out on opportunities with, you know, interim city manager, who knows? But the reality is, where we're at right now, I think councilmembers like Councilmember McNeil, serving on a regional committee with transit, has absolutely the best intentions in mind, making sure that City of Bothell is at the table. So I have great confidence that he's going to continue to push, I think, Seashore and Eastside Transportation Partnership. Are you on both? Yeah. So pushing on those to make sure our voice is heard, and he has a voice loud enough for all of us to hear. So I'm confident that hopefully we, as things continue to move forward, we're going to be at the table to hear the voice. It's just, things have been happening here in the city, and I know our new city manager is here and has a passion for communicating regionally as well, but there was a time where we had an interim city manager, maybe during a critical time for Sound Transit III. I don't know. But the good thing is, we are a city moving forward that wants to be at the table, and we certainly have been for many years, and we will be again. So in regards to the bus rapid transit, Councilmember Deputy Mayor Doer made a comment, like the Brickyard Road, that doesn't have immediate access to the HOV lanes. So, but still, I saw the dot was as considered BRT, but I think your answer was that the feds have a different definition of BRT, as long as the majority of our lanes have free access. So I imagine we'll never get to a place if we decided to put BRT designation on anything because so much of the lane is in a HOV lane. But otherwise, where a bus is pull off and get back onto that, I don't see that in the very near future, right?
I think we have a couple of challenges, and the north part of 405 has drawn a lot of our attention because of those challenges there. The state has a long-term plan to have inside express toll lanes or managed lanes across the entire length. Our project assumes some outside flyer stops. So we've got to reconcile, where do those stops go? How do we make the best value of Sound Transit's investment in the near term as we all work together to try to get the long-term vision actually executed? So I think it's very appropriate for this council to focus on the fact that this is a section of 405 that really does need profound attention. And I would encourage you to use all the tools in your toolbox. Councilmember McNeil's service on the boards, there's the executive group for 405 that meets regularly, your staff participate in all of those level groups, and you have the process working with us. Our project has the one benefit in that unless some big thing happens with an initiative or something, our funding is actually pretty secure. So.
I may ask you that in just a second.
We'll wait on that for just a second. But assuming that the funding sources are stable over time, the funding is actually secure, so that's a good thing. The downside is that there's often a little bit less flexibility about how we can use that funding. The voters said, build this, and that map, or something very close to it, was in the package that the voters approved. So to build something radically different, to move money out of one subarea to another, from even within a subarea, from one interchange to another, is not an easy thing to do. And so it would require not just a good reason, but a lot of political will and agreement for that kind of thing to happen. And of course, the next city down the road happens to like where that money is being spent. So that's part of our challenge here, is how do we work together? I think, again, this bears our attention, and we ought to use every tool and mechanism and forum we can.
I appreciate you bringing up that this was on the ballot, and in all full transparency, I voted against it because I believe Bothell was left out in the cold, which was unfortunate. The BRT lane I saw for University of Washington-Bothell seemed like it was going up past the Beardsley Development and then back on the freeway that way. Why, I imagine you analyze the southern access as a valid point.
Predates my time at Sound Transit, all my own.
Well, we've looked at a few things, but this actually gets back to when I was talking about how all this comes together at UW-CCC with the WashDOT and the transit agencies, and what's really the best way to do that? We've actually, we've met with UW-Bothell and CCC, the people developing their master plan, and the answer to that is, that's a great point, and that's a big part of what still needs to be worked out, is what is actually the best way to get all those transit agencies and the school to complement each other's goals in this space? So that's, that's a big part. That's why I pulled it up as a big issue, is that's, figuring that out is going to be at least one of my first orders of business. Because that's a linchpin to a lot of work right there.
Cool.
It affects both routes, so it's.
I want to jump into the next most difficult question potentially. The $30 tab initiative that was filed, I think, today, I think is odd, because as I understand state law, if you have bonds that are already issued, how could you make an alteration of Sound Transit III with a $30 tab? You can't touch it.
Yeah.
So are we wasting our time with a $30 tab initiative?
I'm going to make no political judgments, and the financial questions are probably outside of our expertise here tonight. I will guess that, as Sound Transit has in the past, we will get our own analysis team together to have a statement on that, I'm guessing in the coming days. If, in fact, that was filed today, I saw some news coverage, but.
I just, I mean.
But your broader point about bonding against a designated revenue stream, if some of those bonds have been issued, and they've been with a dedicated revenue stream, that does put, that's a legal obligation that an agency has. So I'm saying that generically, I'm not saying anything specific about our particular finances because I don't know it well enough, but generically, your point is well taken, that once you have that revenue stream and you've exercised a bond against it, that's an obligation that you're then.
Sadly, I've seen so many different initiatives in the past come forward, the public votes on them, found that they're unconstitutional because of certain reasons. I don't like wasting the public's time with initiative process for things that ultimately can't be enacted. And my concern is, is this going to happen again here? I did not vote for Sound Transit III, you heard me say that. Regardless, it's in place, the majority of the voters voted for it, we need to see it continue to move forward, the bonds are in place. My last question is the Sound Transit Board. Who appoints that board, and how many members are on it?
You know, I don't know the exact count, I certainly can get you that, 18? Okay, and I believe the county executives are the appointing authority for that board, so they find elected officials within each of the three counties to serve. And as the north corridor program director, I am in favor of any elected official from the north finding their way onto the ST Board, so I would hope to find more over time.
I appreciate both of your answers. Thanks again for coming to Bothell.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. First off, I just want to say thank you for your presentation, and you can hear the voices up here of frustration. There's some frustration about the equity in our area of what's taking place. But I will tell you, as a councilmember who's been here for a year and a half and dedicated a ton of time to transportation, not only locally but regionally, we are now sitting at the table. You know, I can't speak, you know, Councilmember Freed spoke about 12 years, I can't speak about 12 years ago. What I can speak about is right now, and the fact that I'm seeing you in all these committee meetings. The deputy mayor is also attending quite a few of these meetings, including the executive WashDOT meetings. So we are now making sure that our voice is heard, and as Councilmember Freed said, it will be loud. I want to talk a little bit about the funding. So ST III funding is in place and not going anywhere, correct?
Well, as far as we know, it is in place and not going anywhere, but we're watching the state legislature as they met this year, where there were some bills that were proposed. Ultimately, nothing got adopted and signed. And then there's the initiative process as well that could affect those revenue streams. Those are things where Sound Transit leadership often will weigh in and talk about the effect on our ability to deliver projects if one or more of those were to be considered and approved or adopted through a mechanism. But yeah, we, to deliver these plans, and I went through all those years, so there's a lot of sounder and light rail and bus and bus rapid transit. The three main revenue streams are important for us to do that.
Okay, fabulous. So now I want to get into the good stuff. So I like what you said about our city staff, reaching out, being proactive, communicating. Part of the system is getting our community engaged. We see what the 522 coalition did to try to get things done along 522. I want to talk about making sure that we understand what bus rapid transit means for times. So if I am in Bothell and I want to get to downtown Seattle, what am I looking at in 2024?
And I don't know if you have that dedicated to memory right now, or brought a.
No, I don't have that.
You've picked the exact slide I should have put into the presentation, and I apologize for not including it because that is often a metric of interest. I will get you that information within the next day or two. So we do have estimates of what that would mean if you were to get on here and get yourself to either, to light rail, for example, and then get down to either UW or, let's say, downtown Seattle, where a lot of those destinations will be.
So a lot of, I'm not sure if you heard my, the last time I made comments about this, but a lot of what we hear in the community, and a lot of what I speak to, and I'm sure Deputy Mayor speaks to as well, is the time, how long it's going to take to get from the north end of our city to Seattle, or north end of our city to Bellevue, or wherever it may be, or back and forth.
Right.
The reason, the reason I want to discuss that is because the one thing I think we're missing with the park and rides and the bus rapid transit is, where are people coming from and where are they going to park? So you talked about, I think, 900 stalls along 522.
Right.
What happens if we need to have 10,000 stalls? Are we looking at working with King County in, I think they've changed their name now from Alternative Services to Community Connections, their new program? What are we doing to work with those community connections to get people who live in Bothell to those stations that can then take that BRT versus them going and driving from their home to that station?
I think we're doing a couple of things. One, Paul mentioned that we have a duty to do better with transit integration. In other words, how do the different transit service providers actually plan and execute their services so that they aren't conflicting and there aren't gaps in those services? So we need to do everything from looking at the land use and what the land use is likely to generate in terms of riders, where are they coming from, what is their expectation for either driving to a transit facility or somehow getting themselves there, and then where are they going at that point? So that's, a lot of folks with pretty good crystal balls can help us figure out the answers to those questions. Then we need to make those adjustments, whether it's us, whether it's King County Metro, community transit, to best fit what the demands are. I think as Bothell has changed, and it's changed dramatically in these last few years, your downtown is becoming more vibrant by the minute. So you're going to have more people living here in downtown. I hope a lot of them will be transit riders, so they're already here. They should be able to walk to a BRT stop, get on a bus, and get to light rail or some other destination easily. And we have dollars, as I mentioned before, in the Sound Transit III projects, BRT is a ST III project, for things like station access. So that's often been something that's been kind of a needed add-on, but there's not budget for it. Now we have dedicated funds for that. Projects have funds, and then there's a broad kind of agency-wide fund for station access. Station access are things like sidewalks, things like bike lanes, things like resolving conflicts along someone's travel way so that it's easy for them to get to transit and there aren't blockages. And we all have duties under the Americans with Disabilities Act, but there's a lot of things that keep people from getting where they need to go. So not only do we want to have that good service, but it's important that they can actually access that service. So now we've got an ability to design some of those things. We would be working in partnership with your city and with the other cities along these corridors to try to spend those dollars as effectively as possible. I will guarantee you right now, every city is going to have a list this long, and we'll have funding for some subset of that with this program. But what we're doing with cities that we're already working with is trying to find ways to partner together. Is there a way that our project dollars can complement a local project that's already in design or underway, or to build on to something that you've already started? Can we compete together for grant revenues looking forward? In other words, how do we make the Sound Transit dollar yield another dollar, $2 more, that kind of thing, in actual value? So I'm excited that the fact that we've got that dedicated funding there now, so that allows us to take a more holistic look, not just at the station itself, but the surrounding area to the station, typically about a quarter mile, but it might be different dense distances depending. Typically about a quarter mile, but it might be different distances depending on the location that we look at. And then you've got uses like UW-Bothell and Cascadia College. It's a whole campus full of potential transit riders there to students that need to get to campus and then need to get back home. They're coming from a lot of different directions. Could some of those students utilize our BRT service? I think so. So how do we best fit that on the campus and work with the campus to make it an easy service for the students to get to? And then looking at, you know, your local businesses here as you expand into more markets, you're transforming Canyon Park, perhaps getting more residences, maybe getting more Class A office out there, that may be an opportunity as well. So I want to look as thoughtfully as we can and as thoroughly as we can at all the land uses along these corridors because fundamentally, transit is a means to an end. It's not an end in and of itself. It is a means to helping our land uses, our communities be successful. I hope that starts to address.
That definitely answers my question, and it leaves me to say that I'm super excited about the opportunity to be early on in that stage. I know we have a pilot program for Alternative Services right now, Vanpool Program with King County. I look forward to our city staff working with you and seeing how that can work. I also look forward to the connection between the north end of our city, 527, down to the south from 522, and how we can get folks from the north end of our city to BRT that direction as well. So I look forward to those conversations. Talking about the parking rides, actually, let me back up a second. The bat lanes, at what point will the bat lanes be done?
Well, they need to be constructed so that they can operate by 2024. I think depending on the actual specific segment, some may be delivered well in advance of that. We've already got a proposal, and I want to point to your variable Public Works Director, Erin Lenhart, who has been wonderful to work with. She and her team have already been doing design work using previous funds and other funds to get that work advanced. So there are segments in the city of Bothell that are much closer to delivery that don't, you know, need to go through those early stages of preliminary engineering. They're through, nearly through final design. They're ready to be executed. So some of our dollars can likely go towards just right into construction. So some of those lanes can be delivered early. Others are at the earlier stage and will be working with Erin and her staff and then the other Public Works folks in the other cities to try to execute all of those things so that they all can deliver service by 2024. But it would not surprise me if we start seeing some of those projects in construction well in advance of that. I'm smart enough to know not to predict an actual date right now because I don't have those at hand, but I'm excited about the fact that Bothell is probably going to be on the early end of some of those projects.
That's great to hear. As far as the parking garage locations, you mentioned partnerships with those parking ride locations. Have you guys looked at any type of affordable housing elements at those station locations?
Not yet. One of the, I'm glad you mentioned that. Sound Transit finds itself not just in the bus business or the rail business, but also, frankly, now we're into the TOD business, sustainability business, and even as a part of that, some affordable housing aspects are now part of our duties. In a nutshell, and this is probably most starkly expressed in some of the light rail stations that are going to be developed, but I think it bears looking at with our BRT stations along these corners, is are there opportunities for either coordinated development, complementary development with local private sector development that's going on? Is there something with our project that might even facilitate transit-oriented development? We are also operating under state law that requires us to, through the surplusing process, identify some portion of our surplus property that is bought for developing a station and make it available for residential and specific affordable housing use. Now, that's something that needs to be done in a cooperative fashion with the local city and community, but that's actually a duty that we have on us right now to do that. So it's another area where we're building our capacity to learn more about what, how to do that well. And I would expect to work with you and your staff to explore those opportunities for the parking garage in the downtown Bothell area and same with the other two communities that have garages.
Thank you. And then one of the really cool things that I learned in the Seashore, last Seashore, actually the Seashore meeting before, was the effort that's put in at the light rail stations and working with the community and how that looks and feels within the community and making sure that it's a sense of the community. Can you speak to that a little bit about how you envision that possibly with our parking rides and the stations as well?
Yeah. We will do our level best within our project budget and your own design guidelines, local development regulations, to deliver the best project that's a good fit and is complementary to your local land use plan and your goals for downtown. You know, we've heard very explicitly from one of your sister cities, we don't want a big gray, you know, behemoth that sort of just squats there and looks awful. I don't think Sound Transit wants that either. One of the things that we've been doing is to try to develop more thoughtful approaches to parking garage development. There are three garages along 522, two along 405, I believe. And then, I said we're in this business, there's a lot of parking garages down on Sounder in the south, two on Sounder in the north. I believe on the light rail in the south, there's other garages. You start adding them up, all of a sudden, we're building 10, 12, 15 parking garages in the next probably seven to 12 years. So we're going to be in this business. We want to do it well in each case. And I'm excited about the opportunity to build an amenity for your downtown as well as a functional garage. So it has to work for the users, but it has to fit for the community.
Thank you. I guess I would leave with parking rides are nice for people to come and park, but I think we need to find ways to get people onto transit without having to drive somewhere to park because that's creating the congestion in the first place. So I like the conversations that Sound Transit, Community Transit, King County Metro, all of you are having. I appreciate the fact that I'm hearing in these meetings that you guys are now starting to collaborate with one another. It's the first time in many years that I guess you guys have done this. So I'm super excited that that's happening. Again, I've been on council a year and a half, and the one thing I can tell you is going to these committee meetings, it's very interesting that when I hear that a lot of the conversation that happens around these things, if you're not sitting at the table, you're on the menu or however they say that. I tend to try to forget that because I'm at all the meetings. But it's very interesting to me that these things come in front of us, and it seems like, you know, it's the first time we're hearing about a bus barn in Canyon Park, whatever. But I can assure you that the conversations that are being had are, if we're sitting at the table, we get to know about them and we get to make sure our voices are heard. So you had mentioned that you have a north end, you're trying to get some more folks from the north end. Well, you have a body of seven that's very passionate about what happens up here. So hopefully you guys can make a decision soon to have a representative from the Bothell City Council on that board for Sound Transit soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, we're only an hour over our scheduled time, so thank you for coming in. I just had a couple of quick things, and just because I've seen enough over the last six years, please, please, please talk to King County and Community Transit about operating bus rapid transit and just make them tell you their dirty laundry. So they under, so you guys know what they made mistakes at and you don't do them again.
Yeah. In fact, our conversations have already started, taking some lessons learned from both those agencies. And we're having conversations with as many transit agencies that have experience with BRT as we can so that we can get as much of the best practice identified.
Great. It's great that, it sounds like you guys are working very closely with our staff and we appreciate that. That's the most important part, especially in this phase, looking at your schedule. You know, having us weigh in politically is one thing, but to see if it's even engineering, if it's feasible or not and working with us directly, I appreciate what you guys are doing. It sounds like you have a good working relationship, so keep that up. There was one other thing that was brought up that I just, I have to say something about, and I just want to say I'm really appreciative of Councilmember McNeil and the deputy mayor for covering all these transit committees and everything else for elected officials. Every one, both of them told me when they went to every single one of these committees, they said, wow, we haven't seen Bothell in over 10, 15 years. What do you guys, this is great, you're here finally. So I just wanted to point that out, and I really appreciate both of you guys for covering literally every single, they even volunteer for extra ones. So I know you guys hear from them quite a bit, and I just wanted to say I appreciate both of you guys for getting Bothell's oil in the water. So thanks for coming out tonight. Sorry for keeping you for a solid hour, and we look forward to, come on back. I'm sure you'd love to come back, right?
It would. Thank you for the opportunity.
No problem. Okay, moving on to the visitor comments. I have two sign-up sheets. We do have a public hearing later tonight. Are we gonna have, oh, Paul's gone. Are we gonna have public comment on the transportation public hearing as well, or are we just having public comment on the clustering ordinance?
No, so we advertise the downtown parking as a public hearing, and so we're asking that you open the public hearing and receive any comments of any individuals who would like to have their comments included as part of the public record. And then that item will be brought back at a later date. The date uncertain because July is already packed, and so we won't be able to bring it back till September, and we didn't, we're not quite sure which night, which council meeting to pick. So that's what we're asking. Do you have your regular public comment and then to open the public hearing for the downtown parking?
Okay. So if you want to stay for that, you're welcome to, or you can give a public comment now, but their public comment now is not part of the record then because it's not part of the hearing? Just want to make, okay. So the first public comment we have signed up is David Spalding. I recognized you. Mr. Spalding.
My name is Dave Spalding, and I own a home. It's north of Frank Love Elementary School, and there was a piece of property between the elementary school and the six homes that border along Mike Stevens' property. Mike Stevens has passed away, sold the property, and this is when the problems all began. They came in, they tore down all the trees, and evidently, somebody from the city of Bothell went out there, said, you gotta save this tree, you gotta save that tree, you gotta save this tree. Fine, they saved some of those trees. We had a windstorm, and because all those trees were taken out, a lot of these trees ended up on our houses, okay? And they were big trees, all right? That's the first thing. Second thing is when, now they've gone in and they've built these huge homes. It's an acre and a third in there. They've built these huge homes that don't even fit the lots. I mean, it's, you couldn't get a wheelbarrow, you know, down the side if you put up a fence between your house and the neighbor's house. It's gigantic, okay? I'm going to show you pictures of what my backyard used to look like. I ain't got any more years left in me, and I'd sure like to be able to enjoy my backyard, but I don't know, he's gonna, he's gonna shoot, ah, they're not gonna show up.
You're upside down. Good, turn him, there you go.
Well, anyway, I'll put this one up there. This is essentially what it looks like, and that, why it's whited out in the back, I don't know, but it was very, very pristine, very nice. This is what it looks like now without, oops. This is what it looks like now, and there's a five-foot difference between that chain link fence you see and that nasty-looking brick wall. When I was told about this project, they said, oh yeah, we're going to put up a fence. They neglected to tell us that it was going to be on top of a 12-foot wall, okay? Does that affect me? Absolutely. It affects privacy, it affects my plants, everything else I've got in my yard. I take care of my place, I try to. Did I know they were going to build back there? I sure did, but I didn't think they were going to do something like this. What I'm mad about is, I'm not mad at the builders, I'm not mad at the developer, I'm mad at the people who, planners down here, who allow this stuff to happen. There are six homes along there, and they're all affected. And they're affected to the fact that we've had realtors in there, and they've told us this is absolutely, your property is devalued. So our property's devalued, we live with this, and that's my red light to get out of here?
Yeah, I didn't read the rules at the beginning, sorry about that, but there's a three-minute time limit per person. But I'm going to connect you with the city manager to get your, well, I have your information, but to get her business card and talk to her real quick and see if there's something we can do to try to figure out what went wrong there.
Yeah, there's a lot, but, sorry. Oh, and John Webster, he's a inspector, very good man. You guys ought to give him an out of boy and a pat on the back. He's a good man.
All right, thank you. Should I read the rules? Hold on a second. Just so everybody knows what we got here. So this is, these are the, each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further a time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through the member, or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And next is Mr. Habowitz.
Two years ago, we were being told you can't build your way out of congestion. It's amazing what even a small amount of capacity add in the form of hard-shoulder running for three miles can do to prove that we can build our way out of congestion. I am David Habowitz. I am a 25-year member of Sierra Club. I am the founder of Stop405Tolls.org, and I am a board member of the East Side Transportation Association. That's a think tank for transportation on the east side, consisting of engineers and transportation experts. This was proof that it doesn't take an infinite number of lanes to increase your performance on the highway, but you do need to follow with the basics, and that is the 405 Master Plan, which back in 2002 was created, and it actually called for five lanes from end to end on 405. Right now, we have the equivalent of a rural highway that they're trying to make work in a metropolitan area. It's got two lanes and an HOV lane. So we have seen what can happen when we get them to do simple things like adding the hard-shoulder running, adding capacity. From that, I want to say compare that to what happened also back in 2009 in the segment between 522 and 527, when they added that. That made a huge difference in the performance of that section of highway. So now we see once again, we add a little more capacity, and the same happened. That was where they added that through lane from 522 up to 527. So what I would ask you to ask them that gave the two-hour presentation, so it's hard for me in a three-minute presentation to give you all the things that they're not telling you, but you should be asking them, why didn't they do this five years ago? Better yet, why didn't they actually fulfill the master plan, which they are now something like a decade behind in the expansion of the 405 Master Plan? Or that plan that cost, that was $3 million, it was $7 million for that plan in three years to put it together, so I think it was well thought out. Ask questions like, how much did we pay in tolls to get that $10 million of hard-shoulder running? The fact is, through the operating costs of the tolls, it was more closer to $20 million that we paid for that $10 million section of highway. They could have saved $111 million in installing a tolling equipment and put that in for the $10 million that it cost. What happened to all the two-person car pools? That's a very important point. We have kicked the two-person car pools out. How about the increase in collisions? They've had more than 1,000 additional collisions above the previous average since they've put in the express toll lanes. And why they can continue to make billions of billing errors, excuse me, millions of billing errors, including one Bothell resident who came to me with a 20-something-dollar toll bill for his motorcycle, which operate for free. So with that, I'll leave you and know that the tolls are a 1% of their total budget, and you did not hear the true definition of bus rapid transit, which we don't have. And I can give you that if you ask what the other guidelines are for BRT.
Great, thank you, sir. Next is John Sambro. Next is John Sambra.
My name is John Sambra. I live at 11227 Northeast 128th Street, Unit I-102, in Kirkland, Washington, 98034. My software engineering business, Common Sense Systems, is headquartered at the same address. I'm speaking tonight about a difficult and important topic. I ask that you please give this issue serious consideration after the meeting and in days to come. This is a difficult topic to discuss. If you are born female in Washington State, you are at essentially zero risk of genital mutilation. If you are born male, there is a greater than 1 in 10 chance that your genitals will be mutilated without your consent within a few days of your birth. As an infant, of course, you cannot give consent. To obscure its true nature, male genital mutilation is euphemistically referred to as circumcision. Note that the same surgery on a female is named for what it actually is, which is female genital mutilation. Male genital mutilation wounds a man for life. However, due to all of the associated mythology that surrounds this issue, few people understand the true nature of this wounding. Most mothers and fathers are convinced by the mythology, by family and friends, that they are acting properly, that they are acting in their son's best interest. It is nothing but sad when they eventually learn the truth. There are many regret moms and regret dads. Sadly, I am also a regret dad. I learned the truth too late to protect my son. I can at least try to protect other children. The consequences of male genital mutilation are severe and far-reaching. Understanding them requires that a person make an investment of some time and some effort to comprehend. I would like to ask both the members of the city council and the public at large to educate themselves on this issue. To that end, I recommend viewing the YouTube video, "An Elephant in the Hospital." An elephant in the hospital. I also recommend searching for the trailer for the new movie, American Circumcision, American Circumcision. Viewing these two resources will change your opinion of this procedure forever. Finally, if you agree with me that individuals own their own bodies, then how can forcing an unneeded, damaging surgery on a healthy, helpless infant be anything other than a moral crime? If you agree with me that it's her body and her choice, how can you not agree that it's also his body and his choice? In closing, I thank the city council and my fellow citizens for hearing my concern on this important issue. Please, let's do the right thing by all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Lutz. Let's, that's a tough one.
My maiden name was more difficult. Okay, so, thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I did email all of you on June 21st, the subject line was "City of Bothell. Perhaps after my presentation, you could reply and guide me on how to move forward." My husband and I have lived in Bothell for 26 years. Our kids went to school in Bothell and graduated from Bothell High School. After the two presentations, I think I see Bothell as the center of, of the universe in a very different way than Washington Department of Transportation and Sound Transit. Maybe you could consider me to represent the very necessary environmental stakeholder group for the Sound Transit project. But I digress, this is what I came to deliver. I've watched the growth of Bothell, and to be honest, I'm increasingly worried. I'm trying to hold on to the vision for downtown, but I'm really afraid the charming character is being buried in concrete. I do not know how old Bothell can sustain itself when Main Street is a disaster. We continue to support the businesses that have stood the test of time, Alexis Cafe and Three Lions Pub, Gaiotto Oro, to name a few, yet are other new residents even aware of these businesses and willing to look for parking? I see increasing loss of land for development. As an AP Environmental Science teacher within public education for 27 years, I do know the value of green spaces, connecting corridors, and preserving habitat. Traffic is horribly congested, and Bothell is losing valuable habitat that at the very least houses the trees which pull carbon out of the atmosphere and provides shelter and food for many other important species. In several cities, Bridle Trails and Redmond, to name a few, mature trees can only be removed if they're a hazard, and they must be replaced. Additionally, aside from Bothell City Hall, this is a gorgeous building, which is LEED Gold certified, and the new apartment complex, which is targeted LEED Gold certified. I see little consideration of new building incorporating sustainable design and infrastructure that supports renewable energy. There are countless new developments that have been completely cleared of all trees, including many mature trees. Honestly, I don't know anything about zoning and rezoning and building permits, but I do see more and more development. I live in that same neighborhood. That 1.3-acre lot just north of Frank Love Elementary is going to house seven very large homes, which is, on average, 14 new cars entering the roadway. I'm running out of time. Most recently, that complete clearing of land on the Bothell Everett Highway with the, the future home of Nielsen Ridge, there is absolutely no setback, and hundreds of mature trees were cut and removed. It's extremely street property. With any rain, there will be considerable erosion into storm drains and NR streams. The minimal straw and orange fencing is not a barrier to this. I could go on and on. These are just some of the developments within a three-mile radius of my home. Okay, well, as a taxpayer, I vote for improvements, and I'd like to see some of the improvements going more toward, I think, mindful. And I'm not saying you haven't done that, but really, I would disagree with Sound Transit. I don't think we need to be on a timeframe. I think caution and conservative action is important. So anyhow, thanks for listening. Where do I go from here?
Please go to, so I already sent her your email. Please go to the city manager, she'll give you her business card, and so you can, that you guys can get into contact with each other.
Okay.
And we'll figure out how we can put you good use, because you volunteered that you wanted to do some stuff.
I do. This is my first meeting, I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Bob Hurst.
I actually came to talk on the clustering arrangement that I misplaced my.
So you could go now, or you could wait till the public hearing for the clustering?
And I talked twice, I'd like to talk on this.
Oh, double dipping. Were you here two weeks ago trying to do a double dip? So ideally, if you want to be in the public record, you need to give your statement during the clustering public hearing.
I'd like to just comment on the traffic.
All right, come on up.
The, the growth here has been exponential, to say the least, and I think it's gotten a little bit ahead of us. When you see 7,600 square foot lots with footprints that must be close to 15,000 feet on some of these houses, arm-reaching out to touch the other house, lack of trees, clearing of land, I'm a land developer now, I've got three properties I'm interested in the clustering arrangement for, but there is some kind of quality of life we're losing by rushing in some of these big places. Builders like the million-dollar homes are enormously profitable. My vision for my properties now with this clustering opportunity is to possibly build, I have an acre, three, one-acre plats, and I'd like to see more density, I would like to build 1,200 to 1,600 square foot two-story houses with smaller footprints, that would be affordable. Hopefully, it may be a half-million-dollar target price, today's interest rate's at 3% to 4%. That's the equivalent of an old house at $300,000 at 6% or 8%. That's my vision for the future, so I'd like you to look at your zoning and other things, and I'll talk on clustering later, but I think things have gotten too far away, and I do encourage you guys to look at what the gentleman here said about, forgot his name, but the gentleman with the Transportation Coalition said about Sound Transit. I think they're trying to pull the wool over eyes, we need to go very carefully with them. Like you say, we're going to get a whole bunch of the expense and minimal benefit. That's been a common theme for quite a while with these guys. Bus transit, Bus Rapid Transit is an oxymoron to me, there's no such thing. We, I, people don't like monorails, we need a monorail down the Burke Gilman Trail, going between Bothell, Woodinville, and down to the U District. Elevated monorail would be a good choice, I think. That's it, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide a public comment? Go once, twice, all right? So we're at 8:30, almost. Would the council like to go have a break? Yeah, okay, so we're gonna go for a break, and we'll be back at 8:35.